We good? Perfect. Welcome, everybody. Happy Monday. Welcome to our Planning Board meeting, Monday, June 5th, 2023, 4:30 PM. Do we have any calls to... Oh, can I first call the meeting to order? Great. Any declarations of conflicts? Yes, Sen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Declaration... Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, one of the items, I happen to be of the tenant of the applicant, so I would excuse myself from that. Excuse me. Yeah, it's B, number six.
Gotcha. Forty to forty-two. Okay. Yeah. I agree. All right. Thank you for that. Can I get an approval of the agenda? Moved by Chris Fournier, seconded by Counselor McKay.
Madam Chair, I just wondered... I wondered if we might take a minute just to talk about the two properties, Euston Street, the Irving property, and the one on University Avenue, the Gulf Station. We have two gigantic eyesores that, you know, we keep hearing that they're going to be addressed, but never seem to be. I wondered if that could be added to the agenda or if we could take a minute to talk about it?
That would fall under unsightly premises, which is protective services, but I will, maybe without putting Cao Mohammed on the spot, just defer to her. Is this something we can add to the agenda for a discussion? Okay. Okay. Great. All right. Thank you. And can I get an adoption of the minutes from our last meeting on May 1st? Moved by Counselor McKay, seconded by Basil. Great. Any business arising from those minutes? Okay. Seeing none, just wanted to welcome. We have two new Planning Board members, and I thought maybe we could just take a minute and go around the room and introduce ourselves. And yeah, just a brief introduction. I know most of us know each other, and those that are back for another term, welcome back. But we do have two. We have one on the phone, and then we have Sen over here. So maybe we'll start with Rosemary and just work our way around.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rosemary Kovarish.
Hi, everybody. I'm Chris Fournier. I'm a local real estate agent in Charlottetown. I've also been here for one term and look forward to my second term. And welcome. We're glad to have you aboard.
Hi, my name is Paul Conley. I've been a member of the board for the past 11 months and look forward to the new term.
Basil Hambley. I've been here for the past term and renewed for this term. And welcome to the new members. Thank you.
Phil Brown, Office of the Mayor, and I'm glad to be back, too.
I'm Alani Yankov, Deputy Mayor and Chair of Planning and Heritage. And since I've been elected, I've been a member of this committee and board, but this has just been the chair since last December. So welcome.
Julie McCabe, and I'm the City Counselor who represents Ward Nine. And this is my... I was on Planning Board last term, and I'm fortunate enough to be here again for this term. So welcome to the new members.
And I'm Norman Beck, the Counselor for Ward Three. I was elected in November in recent elections. This is my first committee. And so welcome to our new members as well. Thanks.
Oh, my name is Satijit Sen, and I've been recently appointed by the City Council to the Planning Board, and I'm honored and happy to be here.
Hi, Bobby Kenny, and I'm a retired civil servant, and I've had two terms on Planning Board.
Over to you, Jackie. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, everybody. My name is Jackie Skamen. My regret for not being there in person today. I am out of the province, but this is my first term sitting with the Planning Board. I'm also very happy to be here. I'm a recent graduate of the Master of Planning Program at Dalhousie University. And prior to that, I was working as a planner with Upland Planning and Design out of Dartmouth, Nova Scotia. Really excited for the term to come. Thank you.
Uh-oh. I'm sure that Eleanor is probably wondering what to do next.
I think it might be nice to go in and let the new members be introduced to our amazing staff as well. It would be great. Sure.
Brandon Archibald, Planner One with the city. I've been here about seven months.
I'm Laurel Palmer Thompson. I'm a planner with the city. I'm Planner Two, and I've been here about 19 years. I'm old.
Robert Zilke, Planner Two, and I've been with the city for five years.
I'm Donna Miller Ayton. I'm Planner Two. Today's my first day here. And I've been the policy aspect of planning.
And who's the woman in the corner?
I'm Eleanor Mohammed, the Chief Administrative Officer, and I've been here for just over two months.
Thanks, everyone, for that. And now we can move on to our reports. Our first one on the agenda is for variances for 131 Sydney Street, 330 University Avenue, and for 101 Longworth Avenue. And I will turn that over to Brandon.
All right. Thank you and welcome. So I have... We're looking for variances for three different eating and drinking establishments located at 131 Sydney Street, 330 University Avenue, and 101 Longworth Avenue. And they are seeking to, again, get temporary permits for their outdoor patio structures on their properties. So these patios will occupy parking spaces on the lot, which are required in our bylaw, and they provide additional seating for patrons throughout the 2023 summer season. First off, we have 131 Sydney Street. This patio will be located at street level to serve the patrons of Old Dublin Pub. And as in previous years, the patio will occupy three required parking spaces, and it will be... They are seeking to be active until the end of October. Since 2020, the establishment's received approval every summer from us, and there's been no comments from nearby property owners, whether in objection or support. Resultingly, the Planning and Heritage Department recommends approval of the patio subject to that the applicant submits a letter of authorization from the property owner, as well as they receive a development permit from the Planning and Heritage Department. And next up, we have 330 University Avenue. So like 131 Sydney Street, the patio will be located on three parking spaces on the lot at the front of Soul Food Restaurant, as they have the previous three summers. The patio is also looking to be active until the end of October. And since 2020, this establishment has also received approval every summer. We received one letter of support from a nearby property owner for the patio and received none for objection. In conclusion, the Planning and Heritage Department is recommending approval of the patio subject that the applicant receives a development permit from us. And lastly, we have 101 Longworth Avenue. So this patio will be located within one parking space and one loading space at the front entrance of Red Island Slider. This is the same location as the previous three summers, which were all approved. We received no letters of support or objection for this from nearby property owners. And like the other two, the patio is seeking to be active until the end of October. The Planning and Heritage Department recommends approval for this patio as well subject to the applicant receiving a development permit from the Planning and Heritage Department. And that is all for that.
Thank you, Brandon. Anyone have any questions for these? No questions?
I do.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Buck.
I guess I'm just wondering... A lot of these have been longstanding renewals. And I do know that in one particular instance, there was concern that the permit may not have been issued in a timely enough manner. I'm just wondering if there's a way to... I guess, and again, I don't understand. I'm not sure of the process, being new to this committee, how this actually works. Does this have to get... Do they have to submit a new plan and a new application year over year, even though they've had it for the previous two or three years?
Yeah. So they have to go through the major variance process because they are taking away from the required number of parking spaces on their establishment, and they have to put up the temporary structure, which I think... There's a section in the major variance that for temporary structures, it requires a variance. But yes, they've all received approval for the past three years, and they've submitted new applications, but they say the same thing each year. They're just... They want the same thing every summer. And I agree. It is a lot of work for the applicant to have to keep doing this and going through the variance process.
Well, and I guess, you know, if we're taking up our time and taking up their time and kind of, you know, we're talking about red tape or whatever, this would seem to me a case of it, where if it's pretty much a rubber stamped approval... I mean, I have no problem with it. It's worked out. We've only received letters of support for the... Each of them, or not in each of them, but, you know, we've never had any issues with any of them. So why do we have to go back through this whole formal process year after year? It just seemed to me that would make sense and that we, if we don't have issues, if there's nothing coming forth or no complaints, and they've worked out well, can we maybe expedite this a little bit for future years or develop a process that would allow for that to be expedited?
Thank you for that, Counselor Buck. That would require, if I recall, probably a change to our bylaw. I don't disagree with you, considering I think that at least two of these are already up and operating already and under... Without the approval. I think that's something that we could ask staff to look at for our next season, to look at something that the... That we have some change to the bylaw, that maybe this can be just approved at the operational point of things instead of, you know, following here. It is a lot of extra busy work for the folks out there trying to get gathered up from their tourist season, along with a lot of extra pressure on the staff and this committee as well. So we can ask to... For that to go back to... For staff to prepare something in terms of a change to take to council for the future.
So does that require a motion or just a direction from us?
That's just a direction. Yeah. Yeah. What we will need, though, for today is do we have... We will need a motion today, if there's no other questions, to forward this along to council for final approval.
I'll move.
Okay. Moved by Chris Fournier and seconded by Paul Conley. All those in favor? Great. All right. Thanks, Brandon. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have 600 North River Road. It is a request for a major variance request to increase the maximum height requirement from 49.2 feet to approximately 72 feet to construct a six-story, 90-unit apartment dwelling with main-level commercial space and underground parking. And we have Robert Zilke here today to provide us the information. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you can see before you tonight, there are four parcels, two that share the same PID. All of these parcels, I believe, will have to be consolidated because they're not currently in order to accommodate the proposed apartment building slash mixed use with the commercial. The official plan designation is commercial, and of course, we have our zoning, which is C3, which is shopping commercial zone. Just note that in the report, as it's stated, anytime you're dealing with an apartment residential use in the C3 zone, it steps down to the R4A zone. And so that's kind of the request for variance is just to the height section of the R4A zone. So that's, again, as the chair put it, we're going from 49 feet, which is the maximum height, and increasing that to 72 feet. So the proposed variance request is to allow for an increased height in order to accommodate the proposed mixed-use development. So there will be commercial on the main floor with some enclosed parking and underground parking. And then on the top floors, we'll have, I believe it's 91 apartment units. This is the site plan prepared by the applicant. As you can see, it's located on 600 North River Road, just behind the Power Center. So that's kind of the Home Depot parking lot right there. So you have surface parking right there to the rear. You have some light industrial type uses directly to the north. And then, of course, you have your commercial on either side of North River Road to the south and to the west. You can also see, too, that in regards to the underground parking, there's also some surface parking available. The application actually has... The application actually has excess parking, so there's going to be additional parking for guests that would be visiting tenants within the building and also for the commercial use, the ground commercial use. These are some elevations that the applicant produced. As you can see here, they're going to have a mix of material, everything from corrugated metal siding to faux wood material siding, and then fiber cement panel, I believe. So just kind of breaks up with some different articulation. And here's kind of a full rendering standing from North River Road. And that would be standing just behind the building from, I guess, what could be considered like the parking lot of the Power Center there. And then that gives you kind of like some vertical distance. You can kind of see there, I believe, that is portion from North River Road, which would be located here with the entry to the underground parking. And then you have the commercial, I believe, units along here, and then, of course, you have your apartments. And then from North River Road, you can kind of see the elevations and kind of like the height difference between buildings along the street. So this was, this variance for a height was circulated to surrounding property owners as per the bylaw requirements. We received three letters from the public, all in support of the proposed development. And you can see those letters in attachment D of the report. So when we're looking and performing a planning analysis of the proposal itself, there are various positives that are going along with it. We do have mixed-use development, which is always a key component of urban planning in general. It's close in amongst different amenities, such as shopping, retail, some eating establishments as well. It's located along a bus route for T3 transit, so there's the possibility that tenants can use public transit and kind of create more walkable kind of situation, especially with retail being so close. And then there's surplus parking available on site. So with that in mind, some shortcomings which could be addressed is obviously the height for the variance that it's going through right now. There is landscaping requirements for commercial properties, so those will have to be, it's about one approved tree species per 10 meters of frontage, so that would have to be included in the final site plan submitted to the city if this were to be approved and a permit were to be applied for. And then there was also some concerns regarding potential traffic just in regards to North River Road. I think board members are quite familiar with North River Road at peak travel times. It can get quite congested. So one of our requirements or conditions of approval is that a traffic impact study be prepared, just to look at the traffic impacts on North River Road. And then that would be, any kind of recommendations from that traffic study would be satisfied according to the manager of Public Works, that would be Scott Adams. So if he sees any type of improvements that could kind of be made to the ingress, egress of the site, or any traffic control devices that would be required to kind of alleviate congestion, then that's something that we would put as a condition of approval for the applicant prior to the release of a building permit. And I can, the applicant is here also to provide, I think, a brief overview and answer any questions.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Robert Haggas. I'm the principal architect at Sable Arc Studios, representing this project. Robert's done a great job in pointing out all the benefits of it. Obviously, there's a great need for more units in town, and density makes a lot of sense. I think it's also on par with the plant, the city's plan to amend the bylaw for potential six- and eight-story structures in our major thoroughfares, this end of North River Road being one of them. It's in that darker blue area, if you recall that diagram. So without those two additional stories, sorry, can I, is it? Sorry, if restricted to the four stories, we basically lose about 36 units, so we'd be down to 54. So this one here? Great. And hence the request for those, that height variance, going from 49.4 to 72 feet. There are, can I use this pointer? The top one, thank you. So there are actually two access points to the parking. This is to a lower, lower-level underground parking, and then there's actually grade-level parking access from the rear. The commercial is located to the front, about a 3,600-square-foot commercial entity fronting onto North River Road. In terms of the exterior, yes, the three different primary materials being a fiber cement or a masonry-like material represented in the dark gray, potentially a faux wood vertical siding to kind of give it some warmth, and then a lighter material in that top story. We've also cantilevered the second, third, fourth, and fifth floor that provides some additional square footage to the units. This is on the northeast and west side, but also a bit more articulation to the facade. The ultimate goal, obviously, was to help break down what would otherwise be a very large volume. It's taller than the adjacent buildings, of course, so hence these few design moves. Another important thing to point out is that, in fact, the building that's kind of masked there is an apartment building. The good news is this building won't have any major effects in terms of overshadowing. It's overshadowing the adjacent commercial property, which is also owned by the developer, the old Kia dealership, which they intend to reuse. I'm not exactly sure on the tenant, but there's ample parking for that, along with the apartment, additional 30 parking stalls for the apartment itself. For the most part, that's it. I don't know if there's any specific questions you might have about the design that I could provide some insight on?
Thank you, Robert and Robert, for the reports. I will turn it over here to anyone with questions. Yes?
Robert, looking down the street to the Dr. Habey's buildings, they're all four stories. So we're just adding two more, really.
That's correct, yeah.
And as you said, it was identified by Upland and the consultants that are looking at reviewing our, doing a comprehensive review of our official plan that we have to look at. North of Road, University Avenue, and St. Peters Road is those major corridors coming into the city. North of Road is not just because of the traffic up north of Road. It's become a default entry coming from the western part of the city, Cornwall and beyond. So that's, I don't know how your traffic study will account for that because that traffic is going to be there, and this will increase, but to what degree, I don't know. I have always been asking, I asked our former manager of planning, new builds for apartment buildings, multi-unit apartment complexes. We are going towards a more greener, greener environment, and that means more EV cars, EV electric vehicles. Do you have any proposed, or does the developer, could you propose EV recharge in stations in this facility or in the parking lot?
Absolutely. Take it under recommendation. We haven't gone into that level of detail yet, of course, to make sure that this is viable and would be approved for the additional stories. But I can't see why they would not include at least a couple EV stations. Every new building that we're designing is incorporating that. It's just a must these days.
With the potential to add more, correct? Is that something you would recommend?
We'll certainly discuss that with the developer about providing the provisions for adding additional EV stations.
Okay. And the last question, Mr. and Madam Chair, is, again, it's a green space. We're building these multi-unit apartment complexes, multi-unit commercial spaces. I didn't see too much for green space there. Maybe I missed it.
No, you're correct. I mean, we've only carried for the required 10%, but there isn't ample green space. There would be green space at the front here, which isn't properly shown, up to the underground parking ramp. There is some additional green space also at the rear here that would be for essentially both buildings. We haven't talked about the amenities that might be added to that outside of it being green, whether it's Pictin Carrier, gazebo, or anything like that, but it's obviously possible.
Yeah, I hope so, because I know with our Parks and Recreation, they're looking at this 10%. I think we will have to look at increasing that 10% because we're just building everything out. It's all going black asphalt, which is fine for parking, but down the road, we will need more green space that will allow for at least a little comfort for the renters in these apartment complexes.
And the good news is, is 95% of the parking requirements for the units can be located underground, or either in the basement, at grade level, in the enclosed parking area. So parking stalls could be removed, but then you end up with another issue. But I certainly appreciate the comment on green space.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Anybody else? Go ahead, Paul.
The proposal has lots of pluses, but the one issue that really cries out for further study, and I know that there's going to be a traffic study completed, but I just wondered, is there any possibility that the exit from that development could be redirected off of the North River Road? I mean, you drive in North River Road, and you see folks trying to come out of the Habey Apartments, for example, to make a left turn, it's virtually impossible. And Basil was just pointing out that he came in North River Road a short while ago, and the outgoing traffic is back to Belvedere Avenue. So, I mean, we have a significant issue here that needs to be addressed. The proposal itself, I mean, the setback is good, the trees are being planted. It looks good on paper, but we have a significant issue there on North River Road that is only going to be amplified.
Thank you, Paul, for your question. Does the, does either Robert or the developer, Robert, have any thoughts on that? I mean, traffic has always been a challenge, but, you know, when we look at our growth management study and we see that over the next 10 to 15 years, we're going to be having an additional 18,000 to 20,000 folks going to be living in Charlestown. Traffic, yes, is going to be a problem, but I don't, I don't see it as something that we should be hindering development because we are, you know, we have almost a 0% vacancy rate. And unless we start building some units, that's not going to go away either. But if anyone else, if you have any thoughts on how, you know, best practice, how that goes, maybe I'll start with you, Robert?
Certainly. So it's a good point, and obviously, traffic is something that we have to consider. That's why we have that condition, that it's to the satisfaction of the manager of Public Works. If the case is, like, and I agree, where if you're trying to make a left turn on, you know, four lanes, it's going to be kind of hard, you're going to be kind of queued there for a while. So, you know, recommendation from the impact study and the manager of Public Works is to have, you know, right out only, just to keep the flow of traffic going, then that would be obviously a condition that would have to be satisfied, and then that would actually be implemented in the permit application, right? So that's essentially why staff is just having the condition that, you know, anything that the manager of Public Works sees in regards to traffic control, that that's implemented at that time. So that would be, I guess, staff's position on that.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Anybody else? Oh, go ahead, Counselor Buck.
So I just have a, I do have a few questions. What does the bonus height mean? Just could you explain what bonus height means?
Sorry, and maybe, so that's the additional 20% that would be given for underground parking. And the 91 units shown, that basically, if the Florida area ratio over the consolidated lots, that's what we would be able to build to, based on the zoning, with that 20% bonus for underground parking. We're suggesting 90, and the only way that happens is with the additional height. So the bonus is for incorporating 75% of your parking requirements underground, recovered parking, right? Which we've accommodated for closer to 95%.
Okay. You were talking earlier about the, and I saw, I see the solar profile that we have on here. So since we're going above four units, or would be going above four units, does the fact that the building is regressed from the road, does that provide enough solar, like, you know, so we don't get that shadow casting that you were referring to? Or do the, do the top floors have to be set back again from the, from the lower floors? Do you know what I mean?
The system has detected that a few lines are still connected to the conference and will attempt to disconnect them. If you wish to remain in the conference, please press star 1. 15? To dial out, please dial the area code and number that you wish to connect to the conference, followed by the pound sign. Press star to return to the conference.
I'm sorry. So in terms of overshadowing, I mean, it will cast a shadow, shadow, obviously, but it's really only going to have a detrimental effect on that commercial building directly adjacent and/or the parking lot into the super block, if you want to call it that, and onto the street. So at least the residential portion that is located to the south isn't being heavily affected by that?
Perfect. Okay, thank you. That's what I was wondering. The Action Auto Building there that's next, is that, that's going to stay under the new, Action Auto currently sits there, that's going to remain?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
Thank you, Counselor Buck. Go ahead, Rosemary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question about the transportation plan that was presented at the public meeting about 18 months ago. Wondering what the status of that is. It was a plan, like a 10-15-year plan for transportation around the whole city. And specifically, I'm wondering what the plans, I can't remember what the plan was for North River Road in that master plan.
Thank you, Rosemary, for that. Not to put the Chair of Public Works on the spot here, but if she has an update on that, would that be okay to ask you to provide that? Thank you.
I can only tell you that we will be updated on Thursday. It's on the agenda for an update to be provided to committee on where the West Royalty Master Plan is. So I don't, I can't answer specifically where that whole plan is, but we should have an update on Thursday. Maybe, Your Worship?
The West Royalty Plan is for the St. Dunson's property. So what lies between Mount River Road and Malpec Road, all that land? The reason it's called the West Royalty Traffic Plan or West Royalty Master Traffic Plan is for that specific area. We didn't, I don't think the traffic plan covered North River Road, St. Peters Road. This is just to make the interconnections of that property that is owned by the St. Dunson's University Board of Governors.
Extends down to Lower Malpec Road, but we also have a North River Master, they were looking at a North River Road Master Plan as well. So we can ask for an update as far as that. I think they're really trying to put it all together, but we need to hear it all yet. We haven't heard it yet.
So just to clarify, the public meeting at the Confed Center about 18 months ago, that was only?
It was on the West Royalty Master Traffic Plan. The one that Counselor McCabe was talking about is that we're doing a plan for North River Road, and I think the RFP just went out, it could have been EXP Engineering that picked up the contract. So there will be work done on that, but I don't know if it'll do counts. I think we're just, similar to the University Avenue Plan, how we're going to expand the active transportation pathways. But as for traffic flows, that's in the West Royalty Master Plan, which is just for that specific area. So there are plans being worked on, and as I said, Rosemary, North River Road is a default entry into Charlestown, mostly from the west end. You can't stop it. It's, you know, it's, it's what we're living in right now. It's easier to go down University Avenue than going to North River Road.
Thank you, Your Worship. I believe Chris Fournier had a question.
I, thanks for the presentation. I think it was great. I think this is so needed in the city. I know I'll be voting yes on it, but just, I think it's perfect. A lot of these people I can see probably not even having cars if they're so close to Walmart and everything else, you know, because there's a lot of folks that give up that later in life, but can still live self-sufficient. Just to get my head wrapped around the height, I know we done one, and maybe Robert can answer this. I know we done one behind the Queen's Arms. Would it be similar to that height?
I believe so, yes. It would be very similar in the same height as this apartment building.
Perfect.
Great, thank you. I think there's been- I think there's been a number of them over the years that have had the, that we've given the bonus height, I mean, look at the university itself, so. Any other questions for anybody before I ask for a resolution?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Your Worship.
Maybe Robert Silke or Laura. This does not require a design review. I know it's not within the five hundred lots, it's not a site-specific amendment. I know the design looks similar to the Queen's Arms apartment building, especially how it wings out. I think you designed that building too, didn't you, Robert?
We're involved with that. Yeah, the Affordable Housing Act.
Yeah.
Yeah, so through the Chair, to Your Worship, this would not qualify for design review, unlike the one that was previously worked on, because that had an Affordable Housing component. So, anytime you have an Affordable Housing component, you're within the five or lot area, or you're in a site-specific amendment process, then you can attach the design review requirement, but in this instance, a design review is not required.
Yeah. And, Robert, maybe you don't know, but these are all market value rentals. These are no non-market value. It's all market value, that's correct?
That's correct. That's the intent, yeah.
Yeah. And I can say, Madam Chair, looking at the North River Road, by six hundred North River Road, it's all sidewalks. Definitely down the, down the road, they have to become active transportation pathways, so people can walk, cycle, rollerblade, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Your Worship. So, we have a recommendation from the staff to recommend that we approve the height variance. So, do I have anybody here that would like to move by Counselor Beck, seconded by Chris Fournier, that we approve staff's recommendation and forward this along to council? So, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Great. Wonderful. Yes.
Is that, is that approval conditional on a traffic study being done?
I think there were, I think there were a few, a few, a number of things that are outlined in the report that, that go part and parcel with getting the building permit, and one of them is the recommendations from the traffic engineer study.
That's right.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. Is this the one for you, Sen, to lead? This is your conflict one.
I'll take yours, Sen. Sorry, I think there was some misunderstanding, Madam Chair. I think I kept my mouth shut for the last one. I think that application was for, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I was, anyway, I think.
I don't think your vote's going to matter.
Yeah, no, I didn't vote, actually. I kept my mouth shut, and I.
So, we should make that clear in, on the, in our vote, that Sen did not vote in, on the item of six hundred North River Road, because he is in conflict, so we'll just make sure that's reflective in our minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we're on to our final report, which is a rezoning application at four-eighty, four-eighty-two Queen Street. A request to rezone the subject lot from low-density residential, R2 zone to medium-density residential townhouse, R3 T-zone, in order to construct, in addition to convert the existing two-unit semi-detached dwelling to a four-unit townhouse. This will also require an official plan amendment. So, over to you, Laurel, for report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. I'll not reiterate what Madam Chair just read, but I just want to clarify that I did put a new report on your desk, because I did have a mistake on a PID in the report, so I just wanted to correct that and make sure everyone is aware. So, if you're referring to your report, refer to the one that was just provided this evening. So, to give some context to this development, the property is located in a mature neighborhood, and it's bounded by the north by R2 low-density residential zone properties and R3 medium-density residential zone properties. This is the subject property and to the north. To the east by R2 west, low-density residential zone properties, and farther east, mixed-use corridor zone properties along University Avenue. So, right here, and further east would be, oops, mixed-use corridor. To the south by Newland Crescent with R2 and R3 zone properties. This is Newland Crescent and R3, and then R2. And to the west with R2 low-density zone properties along both sides of Queen Street. So, Queen Street and then R2. So, the property is currently zoned R2, and it's occupied by a semi-detached dwelling. The applicant is requesting to construct in addition to the existing two-unit dwelling to convert it to a four-unit townhouse. It's a corner lot, and the lot is approximately nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-seven-point-six square feet, point-two-one of an acre in size. The bylaw requires fifteen-hundred-and-seven square meters per townhouse on a corner lot, and under the R3 T-zone, the property can support the proposed four units. I should say square feet, sorry. Four parking spaces are required for this building. There are already two existing spaces located off Newland Crescent. Two new ones will be constructed on the back of the lot with access off Queen Street. So, the new spaces are here, the access is off Queen Street, and there's two existing spaces here. If an addition is constructed, each townhouse unit is required to have its own separate services for water or sewer and electrical, and a party wall agreement is required to address items such as easements for parking, maintenance, and services. Each unit on the property is required to be subdivided individually so that each unit meets the frontage requirements set out in the bylaw. The frontage is currently seventy-five feet, and it's along Newland Crescent, so if you just look here, this is the frontage of the property, even though the house faces Queen Street. If it's left as one property, the lot does not have adequate frontage along Newland Crescent to meet the bylaw requirement of eighty feet for a four-unit townhouse, and therefore, each unit must be subdivided. So, each unit would have frontage on Queen Street, and they would face Queen Street. The neighborhood tends to be low-density, one to two units. There's three-unit dwellings that are considered legal non-conforming mixed throughout, and there's also R3 medium-density apartment buildings sprinkled throughout the area. Abutting properties consist of low-density, single, and two-unit dwellings on the north and east side, and the property is in, within close walking distance to shopping and elementary school and parkland. If rezoned, the current density will increase on the property by double, and a landscape buffer would be required to be retained along the property boundary of the proposed development, and any low-density development if rezoned. So, we would require a fence or some shrubs along this area and here. There's many sections of the official plan that support this request, and I've listed them within the report, and key points from the official plan to be considered include Section 3.1.2, related to compact urban form and infill development, as well as efficient use of infrastructure and public services. Section 3.2 of the official plan sustaining Charlottetown's neighborhoods, and three-point need, three, housing needs and variety. The official plan supports mixed forms of housing within existing neighborhoods to allow for housing choices. And, as we all know, housing choices within neighborhoods, they're important because they provide variety for people at various ages and stages in their lives. The city's currently experiencing an increased demand for housing, and the vacancy rate in Charlottetown is very low. The official plan has various policies which supports the efficient use of services and making neighborhoods stable and sustainable by supporting more infill development. There have been recent amendments to the zoning and development bylaws as well that supports additional density within established neighborhoods, such as accessory units and garden suites, and we've implemented those changes in the past year or so. The dwelling on this property, it currently only occupies one-half of the lot, so this is the dwelling now, so half of this lot isn't utilized, and there's room for expansion on the property to accommodate additional density. And we should be looking for properties like this throughout the city to increase infill development within the city, and it kind of adds to infill and invisible density with, within the mature neighborhoods. There's room for expansion on the property to accommodate this additional density, and the proposed addition will be constructed to the same scale as the existing dwelling. Now, the applicant hasn't provided elevation concept drawings yet, but they will be available for the public meeting. He has an architect working on them now. So, it, it is compatible with the scale of other dwellings within the neighborhood, and this neighborhood is conducive to moderately higher density, as there are other buildings with similar densities within the neighborhood. Given this is a fully serviced neighborhood, there are amenities in the areas, such as an elementary school, open space, and the property is within walkable distance to shopping services, unemployment, and the downtown core. Charlottetown Mall area, UPEI, and University Avenue are also within a walkable distance. So, in conclusion, the proposal meets many of the technical requirements for moderate infill development within a mature neighborhood, and staff are recommending to support this proceeding to public consultation. I can answer any questions if?
Thank you, Laurel. That was, that was a great report, really, really clear. Does anyone have any questions for myself or for Laurel?
I do.
Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Yeah, thanks for that, Laurel. I think I'm, as Counselor for Ward Three, I would certainly be supportive of this concept. And I just have a question on the public consultation rollout. What does that look like for a property like this? What level of, is it simply a question of the hundred meters, or is there anything above and beyond that?
We follow the same process that's outlined in the bylaw for all properties, whether it's a small rezoning or a larger rezoning, and it would be sent out to one-hundred meters, residents within one-hundred meters as well. It's posted on the property, and we will have advertisements in the newspaper on two occasions, and we also advertise it on the city's website, and I believe the public relations folks also post it on the city's website page, or Facebook page. So, then we proceed to public consultation, and we send out letters to the neighbors within one-hundred meters and invite them to attend the public meeting, and also anyone else that sees the newspaper ads or any other form of advertisement, they're welcome to come to the public meeting as well, and voice their concerns or their support to the application. And then, once public consultation is complete, we would formulate another land use report and present it back to Planning Board, which would also proceed to council for a final recommendation and approval if they deem so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Sen.
Chair, is this consistent with the future official plan that Upland is working on?
No, this is under our current official plan. The, the official plan that's, Upland is working on is currently in draft stage and has not been adopted by council at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify on the official plan, because I know I've been getting a lot of emails from folks, and it's not only not been adopted yet by council, but we are planning on going back out to another round of public information and consultation sessions, so if any of you folks are out there listening that, no, we have not gone any further with the official plan than we did with the first initial meeting, so I just wanted to make that clear, so that nobody is thinking that something's happening that hasn't happened yet. So, thank you. Any more questions for, in terms of this report? Okay, so we have, His Worship has, has moved that we will take staff's recommendation and proceed to a public consultation, with going along to council first for final approval, and seconded by Bobby Kennedy. Kenny, all those in favor? Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you, Laurel. Any introduction of new business? Okay. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor McCabe and seconded by Chris Fournier. All those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you, everybody.